Well, if I had the image on the screen, and I have one here, and I know you had it, I'd have to... We have more technology. This is the first for me, but... Oh, yeah, the proof of the image. I have my powerful president color. Just wanted to share with you again as references to the existing facility and the age of the facility, the diversity for the folks out here with me. But, I've got, I don't have another form on my computer. So, the oldest portion of jail is this section here, designed in 1977, constructed in 1978, 1979. That is the older linear portion of jail currently there. Sometimes speaking to reps at our jail from out here, leaving our later bills, bar section, and you can see in that section, based on my count, there may be all one or two, there are eighty-eight beds in that section. The next portion of jail, the expansion in 1991, construction in 1992, is four and five, just right around this administrative area here, kitchen. And that portion of the facility was equipped in house, maybe off an inmate or two, a bed or two, because bed count right now a little bit in flux, but fifty-six beds. And finally, one of the, what did the jail mention, this came in early 90s, and the latest additions to the jail, you see here, that is door one, two, three, the lock down zone. We designed in 97, I believe, constructed in 1998, February, 99, about the same time this facility was constructed. Includes a hundred and fifty-six, included at the time, I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty-six beds. That count had been modified, if you remember the image I showed you, the bed bumped to the eleven and a half, and we wanted to have to reduce that count by twenty, based on current count. And then thirty-six of those beds, thirty-six of those hundred and fifty-six beds, in the lock down portion of the jail, those are the individual cells, two bunks to the cell, eighteen cells that they house, thirty-six beds. That just gives you some frame of reference, so three hundred, roughly three hundred beds in the facility, where they're located, and when they were constructed. Final slide that I have, didn't have a question come up, so I went ahead and declared a system I prefer to our work order system, facility duty, is actually the application that we do, and have been using that since 2016, well, predates mine, the RIDE. But you will see during calendar year 2019, January, going into 2031, we have five hundred and twenty-six work orders that entered into work order management system that relates the six thirty-two additions over. Take a bullet there, you'll see another five hundred and twenty-six work orders during that calendar year, four hundred and eighty-two were closed, and/or work has been completed, that included close, because there have been occasions where work orders have been entered that will really get back to the facility maintenance, really not facility maintenance staff related. And I will give you a recent example, and this is based on a comment about the state. I have a concern about the desire to add a shadow in the intake area at the jail, portion of jail built in 1998. That is not a facility maintenance item, that is a casualty improvement, that is something that likely would have to come forward, would have to be designed, maybe the most of the architects would be involved, had to be designed, reviewed, approved by the state and then straightened. So, that work order while entered was closed, although it all had its separate, some additional functionality in the facility to maybe capture some of the items, we keep a record of them. So, I have a workarmit mode that we do in the future, then, so it's going to be really good to record that. Any four hundred and eighty-two of those five hundred and twenty-six work orders, that have been completed or closed? Yeah, I didn't load any work order, I didn't do that work. That work done by staff and my department, but facility maintenance, we've got four, including one supervisor and administrative support staff and my department. Four hundred and eighty-two of those were closed. So, that leaves forty-four, probably is out, of those forty-four, six of those are on hold, pending, you see the parts, in manual plumbing. As you might expect, these are not items that we can go down and balance far away, if they will come and hit you down, or we can run into those and get. They have to be ordered, they're special items, there are lead times on those items, we wish it was shorter, but we're waiting on those items to be delivered, so that we can make those repairs, we've exhausted our supply of the parts that were being stopped. Certainly, we can punch you those, but at the moment, there's work order that we cannot complete as we wait for some parts. Fourteen of those forty-four are in progress, I showed you some pictures of those today, or they have been contracted to outside vendors, so, you know, ten progress with the facility maintenance staff, four contracted to outside vendors. Fourteen of those four. Twelve are on hold, pending the report from those new architects, which was referenced earlier. These are probably related to the oldest section of jail, and I keep saying that seems to stick to people, the main area portion of jail, the bar section. So, we have not focused a lot of time and attention upon that portion of jail, which is currently, even then, and we're waiting to see what maybe the architects will bring back to the, to the county as their recommendation. And then finally, of the, that leaves us twelve work orders, and those items are either items that fall within the purview of facility maintenance, items that fall within the purview of the detention service staff, or a combination thereof. So, that is where we stand, and have the sixth of January, with work orders passed through.
Mr. Bud, I still have a quick question for you, it's like we've been drifting on items, but it's been a lot of tension in the public, is the current rider truck that we have on site, the freezer, or freezer, which I do understand is one of those, where they won't hold any results of other architects, would you just tell us what's going on there, so the public will understand what you've got going on with your board?
Okay. During the first week in November, I believe, was the processing room, the facility failed associated with the freezer in the kitchen, and that kitchen was constructed in 1998. I believe the freezer is original to the kitchen, and at that time, we arranged to secure a mobile unit provider at a park beside the loading dock, well, not beside the loading dock, but adjacent to the loading dock, behind the jail, as a stopgap measure. And we had vendors come on site to look at the freezer, what it would take to repair the freezer, give us a number that, honestly, at the time, did not make worthwhile investment. In addition to that, we had already been discussing the need to look at replacing the freezer, and had developed a schedule work, and had three to forty per contractor on site provide us proposals to replace the existing freezer. And while that work was in progress, this situation that we currently have in front of us came to the forefront with the items cited by the Department of Health and Food Services, and the work commissioned by accounting through those new architects. And until such time as we can get some feedback from those new architects, what the recommended improvements we have to deal, whether it's renovating existing footprint, whether it's building new facilities, whether it's a combination thereof, it did not seem like a prudent expenditure of funds to potentially replace a freezer that may not have enough capacity to accommodate or to meet the needs of the existing facility, plus any expansion to the facility. We're looking at investment somewhere between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, I understand that the general expertise of those new architects on kitchen, kitchen equipment, especially being on site tomorrow, we talked about that very issue, but again, we're kind of holding pattern, it's not necessarily a comfortable place to be, I know we create some challenges for staff at detention facility with the mobile unit that is on site, but again, it does not seem like an prudent investment to look at possible, the existing freezer at the ten, a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars investment. And then find out, should those new architects recommend that we build, or build some additional capacity, whatever that looks like, and find out that that freezer is too small, or the cooler is too small. So, that is why we get the current situation out there. But that freezer that's on site, I believe the date is correct, we have maybe off the day two or way the other, since November eighth of 2019.
I would ask any questions, the board members, this time, we've been able to leave that for a while.
Okay, yes. The fence that you repaired or replaced, what's the quality of it, and I mean, I'm still here, and that they can still work it with you?
So, quality is a somewhat subjective term. What I would say is, there's been some lingering concerns, and may be right to let in the presentation after the, about that scene, where, again, here before, the sisters lived, they come into and out of the recreation yard, and there's a gap at the top of the fence, about ten feet above the floor of the recreation yard, where the fence fabric is not needed. And we had talked with a vendor, vendor that did the work to reinforce the base of the fencing fabric, about options to, to address that particular concern. Again, as I was just saying, my comments, work that was done in the recreation yard, six inch by two inch, quarter inch thick, steel galvanized tubes, that had been welded to the verbal support on the recreation yard, and then backed up with a six inch steel galvanized, one quarter inch plate on the exterior, and three bolts passing through that steel tube, through the fence fabric, into the steel plate, secured with mechanical fasteners, bolts and nuts, subjuging forward as far as the base of that fence fabric. Again, I find it as likely that an inmate will find a way to tunnel his way through that concrete slab than to go through or underneath that steel tubing that had to the fence and outside of one, two, and three, and the lock down door.
Well, what do you think about a double fence?
I think it's not as good as a triple fence.
You said that's not good?
I'm sorry?
Did you say that, a double fence?
A double fence is better than a single fence, a triple fence is better than a double fence, a quadruple fence is better than a triple fence. It's really just a matter of, you know, there are some, and I'm telling you one of the frustrations I've had since I've joined the county, certainly dealing with issues related to the jail, there are standards, there are some minimum standards, but there are some items that are really not clearly articulated in the statute, or the general statutes. I'm an engineer, I like numbers, I like drawings, I like drawing to have dimensions on them, and you would be challenged to find a detail that would show you what the fencing along the perimeter of the recreation yard should look like, a minimum requirement. You can't find it. I've asked for it until the inspectors are tired of hearing me ask for it. It does not exist. But to answer your question, triple fence would be, a double fence would be better than a single fence. But what I would say is, in some respects, we have a double fence. You have fence fabric, which is the immediate fence on the recreation yard, you have a masonry wall that is beyond that, and on here before, you had an eight foot tall gate, now you have a full height. So, if an inmate were to find some way to either tunnel, get through the concrete, tunnel into that steel tube, being able to help out, or reach that fence fabric, the next thing they have to find a way that will kind of be on the masonry wall, or compromise, make their way through two full height gates that have added that facility. As far as the timing of monitoring the activity of inmates, and how long it will take to respond, I can't speak to that, but I will say there is at least a second and third line of the fence, if you come through the fencing. Now, some might say, well, maybe what happened is you go up vertically through the recreation yard, or the fence fabric on top of the recreation yard. If you're able to transport vertically, you only have to go through one layer of fence fabric, and then you are outside the facility. But most folks, if you go through the fence, you gotta go through the fence fabric, through a masonry wall, or go through two additional gates. Hopefully, we become aware of the state in some intervening time, and that provides the officers additional time to respond, to intercept that inmate.
Let's look at plumbing, I have a question on plumbing. You know, most plumbing is in the wall, and how can we construct it in a way that we can discover leaks before it starts deteriorating the wall, and also, is the plumbing itself?
The best way to answer that question is, the best way to detect a leak is to inspect it with, and whether that's through routine walkthroughs, which are conducted by staff at the facility during their rounds, or it's through inspecting those plumbing changes, which are obviously outside the door, and only accepted by facility maintenance staff. But I mentioned in my recommendation, that is something that we, historically, we've relied on those items to be flagged, identified, work orders entered into facility duty, or the work order management system, but moving forward, we've looked to work with detention service staff, and jointly get to the facility from one end to the other, on a monthly basis, to flag those items. But even if, even when we do that, there will continue to be plumbing issues. Water is just, water is a force of nature. I haven't been to the Grand Canyon, but water is powerful, and if there's going to be deterioration, there's going to be leaks, that's just the nature of plumbing. The best thing we do is try to be proactive, identify those issues, and repair those issues in time of error.
And that's going to require inspections real often?
Well, again, I can't speak to the operational issues, but there should be routine walkthroughs that happen, to frequency, I can't speak to that, by detention service staff, but hopefully by working together, moving forward with the monthly walkthroughs, that will be another effort to try to identify and flag those issues and get them repaired.
That's the one thing that I was going to suggest, and you said it, so I don't need to discuss about monthly walkthrough.
Well, again, there's actually daily walkthroughs, there may be hourly walkthroughs.
Okay. If we could, Mr. Bud, I'd like to stick to facility issues.
Well, I have some more, but I'm...
No, are the facility issues, please go ahead with that, with...
That's okay, I give other commissioners some time, because we send them over free.
I didn't mean to stop, but I didn't...
That's okay.
...the facility issues with that.
I can talk to him later.
Okay, I want to tell the commissioner, have a question on the facility.
Hi, considering the items that were found efficient in our recent jail inspection, what has the department done as far as preventative maintenance activities and procedures? What has been put in place that's needed to help prevent the deficiencies that were found?
Yes, so, again, I mentioned that I was actually, my whole powerful president, been working with staff to establish a more structured, a schedule for the maintenance on, again, mentioned smoke purge, again, state after occupation, they were operating, but the challenge was, and certainly I take some responsibility for that, even though I'm somewhat new to the jail, is we need to make sure our staff understands the systems that we have and how they work. And again, the exhaust fans that were flagged on the tent are not part of the smoke purge system. So, there's some education involved, both for facility maintenance staff and for detention facility staff. There's been some turnover in facility maintenance, prime example of that, and there's been some turnover in detention facility, and there's been some institutional knowledge if there was, and we've got to reestablish that, and we've got to work together to make sure we've got the facility to protect above the options and these things.
I just want to say, I thank you and also Keith for walking together, and the sheriff's department for working together, although we may be getting more visits than we're not. But I also want to say that most of us are waiting for most of the report, because a lot of these questions have been answered in that report.
Well, we've got another thing you called in, I made a statement that wouldn't be asked, and it's stated to a monthly inspection, rather than a weekly, I did get a call from Mr. Lewis this morning, what he did redo, and we offered a favor, he committed to doing a monthly inspection for the next six months, and he did not go to charge the gap for, even though we offered a favor, but he said, at the end of the six months, we will look at it again, and then he may have to reevaluate his, his own people. But we got six months, I missed, just this morning, Bob, that he's been doing some monthly inspection, which I think will also be quite busy, so I would like to hear him redo that.
Oh, yeah, that would be one thing, yeah, that would be a six month, that would be annual.
Well, we do six months already, Mr. Bellville, now we'll be doing one...
Well, you took the annual, I have to do it every six months.
We've always done that, but it's always been quite a year. I say always, I've looked at the history for the last twenty years, and it's been quite a year, and I'm not sure, back to you, whether it is that. Or any other question? Mr. Bud, I appreciate your time, I know we've given quite a bit of time, and I do appreciate it, you spending the time quite a bit out on your own, and preparing this, and... I, I, please stick around, can't we have any more questions? If you, if you're not being called to that. At this time, I have a commissioner that has a question about a five minute recess, I would order that the question will be of five, eighteen minute recess, and then we'll bring them, and we will have the operations side, all of you. James, he's in some, presented at that time, so we all, we're out there.
Alan can give a presentation, not here.
forty-third, the board commissioners committee, moving forward, give a facility report each month, and then have insurance office, office of insurance, a operation report each month, just so that the public will know where we are. I do know that the facility took a little bit longer than the quantity of what we expected, but we were starting from zero, I would anticipate it taking that long moving forward, because we're pretty willing, go back on what we already established. What we have asked the office of insurance to do is number operations out, not facilities, and that would include in the letter that we're all working on, items two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen under C, and I expect this report is going to cover that, and then under D, it would be items two, three, four, six, and eight. So, at this time, I ask Sheriff, your brother, thank you yourself, or someone else there?
Captain Donovan Wilson, Special Operations.
Okay, Captain Wilson, we'd like to have you come up and address things that you've tried before, so I certainly appreciate you being here this morning, good seeing you.
This is our floor. Well, I am Alan Wilson, or Captain of the Sheriff's Office of Mobile Special Operations. First off, I want to tell you that, like in a bit, the sheriff's done asked that I take a look at the detention operations, take a look at the detention facility, due to all the more issues. So, I went, had staff walk me around, and took a look at the cells, the west side, just how aged and dated it was. We actually had some photography here to document what we saw, and photographs of the entire facility. So, when I got done walking through and talking to inmates on the west side that went bars, and looking at the state of, I can only say that I was appalled, the environment, they had to stay in, not only that, the environment that our workers kept working in. And looking at that, I have been doing law enforcement since 1985, so for thirty-five years, I've been in quite a few facilities. I had a chance to go to Wilson County, tour their facility, first to see how it works and work. Had a chance to go to Etch Aum County, where their facility was built in 1999, tour their facility of how it works, how they require less number of manpower, employees, because of the layout and the design. I chose those two counties because those counties have inmates that we have, right? They have very little issues, nothing compared to what we have. When I would ask them about some of the issues that we have, how they handle it, they actually looked at me as if I was speaking in a foreign tongue, because they never heard a feces being sprayed on their officers, urine being sprayed on their officers. So, when I started looking at, well, what exactly is going on, right? What I want to do is, I'm going to talk about the facility and how we handle some things, but I do think it's important that I roll through and give just a background, not only to, to the commissioners, but to those of the present here, about the sheriff's office, and how sheriff's done offices. I've known sheriff's done for, and it's been a long time, since 1987. I can tell you there's one thing that he stresses, and that is integrity, and the stream is going to work at it, and that is triple down everywhere that he's been. And he doesn't do that for glory, he does that because it's for the citizens that he's trying to work for, right? As a trooper, we're trying to test the highways from the bad drivers, and then as a sheriff, he is trying to do everything he can to serve the citizens at his feet. Go through the next slide, we'll get a quick... The very first thing he started with, when he started office five years ago, was a mission statement. He wanted it very clear of what this office was about. This office was about safety of the citizens in our county, plain and simple, through exceptional customer service, right? So, integrity and professionalism and loyalty, they were the core values of the agency we came from, and that's the core values that not only were brought here, but honor, compassion, diligence as well. So, we have inmates that are in our jail, many of them, and they deserve better than what they have, and I can tell you, our officers working in that facility, compared to that, they deserve a better work environment than what they have. I can tell you this, I've been in it for thirty-five years, I would not work in that jail for the service that they make, and I wonder every day why they come walk, I do. And when I go through this and walk through, hopefully I'll paint the picture of why that's the case, but here's the thing, there is hope, there is, there is things that we can do to make it better, to make it better, and the models are just right next door to us, right across the state, but we can't keep operating the way that we are, it is extremely dangerous, extremely dangerous. Our compassion, our honor, and diligence, as I spoke about earlier, coupled with extremely... It affects the quality of life of every citizen in Nash, Hetchcom, and every visiting citizen. Period. You don't want those issues touching you. He created a task force, multi-agency task force, first time it's been done in Iowa. Here, DEA, FBI, federal partners, who when we need things, we reach out and they can help us immediately. We have people on those units, multiple people. Not only has that helped us with information and bringing things to us, it also has financially assisted the sheriff's office in reaching goals that we have. Goal is always safety, as the board knows, and I'm sure it was brought before at a normal rate of time. Two members were added on so that we can provide highway safety, because we have seen death and destruction for 30 years, and it's important that that doesn't occur. So we brought people on to do that. The U.S. Attorney has come down numerous occasions to sit down and talk about the issues of any area, and how we can remove people that are causing these issues, not only on a state level, but at a federal level, because we have some serious ground here. Here. Sheriff's on the crime commission, we have a member that's with FBI National Academy, and how does that play in the role? Nationwide contacts, and we use it, we'll use it. A recent case in the news where a suspect was trying to flee to Mexico, how do you think we got it? Right? We need to share all that for the simple reason, people don't need to understand all of the ways law enforcement found. Now, also, they asked for forfeiture to help the sheriff's office move in a better direction to provide training and equipment without taxing the taxpayers, but taxing those that are violating the law or criminals themselves over a million dollars in the last two years, used to purchase vehicles that the taxpayers didn't have to purchase. That SRT unit was established because of school shootings, business shootings, first one ever developed in Nash County. And we're constantly improving because the citizens of this county deserve it, deserve it. K-9s, I can tell you bar none, I'm active in K-9s, using money from asset forfeiture. And when somebody runs in Nash County, the chances of them getting away happen to be very slim compared to other counties when I talk to them, because our county handlers have top-notch training across the nation. We have sent it to the border to understand training, we have sent training to all types of schools, because one thing that we value is training. Grants, all types of grants have been made, applied for. Just a good steward, trying to take, instead of saying, the budget that you give us, we want to take money from other places that's available to supply the sheriff's office so that our members can have the equity they need to do the job the best way so our citizens get the best service, plain and simple. And I say all this to say, this is where we're going to head with the detention facility, and I just want to lay the groundwork, and I thank you for listening to it. Training, leadership is extremely important. Without proper training, you cannot lead in a light way. FBI National Academy, we send probably more people with that academy or leadership education than probably most agencies in this state. University of Oregon, so the police system too, I can speak firsthand of that, January 2000, I attended it myself. I can tell you, it is a top-notch leadership program. The sheriff sends members to that. He doesn't send it to go where I am sitting, he sends it so that they come back and they can lead those under them in a better way. Right? AARP, sending our personnel supervisors to local training, and as well as across the state, Charlotte and other places, to receive training. Because you know, if you don't have proper leadership, everything else goes dark and fog. We encourage our employees to take court and to follow up on training. Associate degree, bachelor's degree. We value education because we need some of that education and licenses. Thirty-eight advanced certificates, eleven intermediate, since the sheriff's taken over. We have 28 officers working the road in Patrol Division, in everyday file suits, 25,000 calls a year, averaging 900 reports, investigations, outstanding job they do. Seventy percent of their cases are solved, which is above an average. Fifteen homicides in 2016, 2014, in one of them. Everyone's been solved except one, which is continually active. Transport's mental health is huge. Nine of their transports, just this year alone, are putting mental health in detention. Staffing, we have ninety-one officers. Right now, we don't even have any, we have people in the process, they've all been selected, to be hired, gun vacancies, and we have a waiting list. There was concerns that, there was a turnover in the sheriff's office, so I put this little picture, we clarified that in this slide. Thirteen officers and 2,000 not counted for that, three of them here are retirees. Four of them, you can't blame, legally, to go to another agency for promotion or higher salary. You can't argue somebody won't do better themselves if that's the case. One of them for federal position, two for disciplinary reasons, three for other reasons, just wanted to go somewhere else and try. And out of those three, two of them won't come back as I speak, because one of them slightly may hire. So we don't have a problem at all. Detention staffing, this is where our problem is, and I'm going to go into the detention part. Our staffing in the detention center is a direct reflection of the work environment that they're in. When I took that tour and saw what they had to go through, saw where they had to walk, where they had to put their hands, how they had to close the door with forty inmates, and no, no, we're not a prison, we're not a DOC, we do not have a per team that when they get hacked, we're going to pull them out of their minutes. We're not. Probably when we pull them out, that's exactly what happened, we'll be pulling them out, then we'll have very small chances to survive at that point. Eleven vacancies, seven in the hiring process, five on Friday interview this week. But out of fifty-two positions, six of them were ministered. And if you look at it, there's thirty-three officers that run our jail now, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, four squads, you can do the math, and you can see, that cuts to the bone, cuts to the bone. Past 14 months, we have done our part in hiring detention officers, and the pay for the officers, you guys, ladies and gentlemen, you know, is not that high. So we hired 24, and what is appalling is that nineteen have resigned, nineteen. We hired people that worked in DOC prior, and one individual working in DOC stated that after two weeks, they were done. It's too dangerous, it's too dangerous. So as I go through this, I want to point out why it's too dangerous. And we have a chance to fix this, we have a chance to fix it, and we should fix it. The work environment, that's why they're leaving, it's not because supervisors. You walk over and walking in, there's more posts behind you, and when they try to open it up with a key, they have trouble to open it up because it's so dated. It makes an issue, that's a concern. Staffing, we would love to have a minimum of twelve, in reality, we probably fifteen a shift, it'd be very effective in the way that jails designed. Jails in other places, Wilson and Hetchcom, require less numbers because the design is different, much different, much safer jail. Currently, where it's six is mandated, maybe seven on a shift, and we're trying to operate. That's all the staffing we have. We have eight officers that are assigned verti, because our inmates are human verti, and we require a man in this post. I know it creates a burden for the county, $11,000 a month for a day, three, almost $4,000 if you ask me for a year. It is creating a burden for the detention center staff to try to manage from a new one, it is extremely difficult. Assaults, since July of 2019, there were thirty-seven inmate officer assaults. It's unreal, unreal. I would dare say, if I pulled the records, that assaults on our deputies on the road are probably three or four a year, for average. I can tell you, I've had a very active career, then I've had very few assaults. Thirty-seven inmate officer. We bring new people in and try to train them, and they see this, and they quickly decide that there's other places they can work for this money and go somewhere else. Feces being sprayed on, hit in the head with plates, that's sad, that is really sad. Officer head back, two years in, in the old section of the bars, is assaulted, assaulted, hit in the head with a tray, right? You know what the inmate does? He doesn't care. He doesn't care because he's already in jail for a very serious crime, extremely high bond, and someone to go in and get him, he raises his hands and he is up. And then he's locked in the very same cell. We had no other cell to put him in, but the cell that he was in. So we put him in that cell. And you know what he does later? As I'm going to point out, he jimmies a lock in that bar cell and comes right back out. We had no way to lock him down. At that point, we had two ISO cells that we were using, and they were already full with inmates. A report done by the Department of Health and Human Services, they said that in December, we could have 200 male males and 11 females. Our facility, as you know, as I already pointed out, is consisting of basically three separate designs. The west annex, built in the seventies, old bar design, I'll show you a picture of that, and I'll show you the, really the weaknesses of that when we talk about things, and how dated this is. The ones one, two, three, four, and five, is an open concept, thirty-four inmates out. And that's all for identity, if you have thirty or forty inmates in this room. But when you have predators that are willing for murder, when you have gang members that do violence as a way of life, that does not work, does not work. Wilson County doesn't have that, Hetchcom doesn't have that. This is not the set of this. We can't continue to function as it is. Segregation, eighteen cells, used to separate inmates, a total of 36 beds. But the reality is, we're tasked with one to eight ratio of showers, one of the three showers that are working, two showers have been down, and I'm going to show you pictures, that don't work, water runs out of them, nothing's ever been done. So in essence, we can't use but 24 of those rooms, 24 inmates, period. West annex, it's four separate areas, four separate old bar areas. That old bar design requires our officers to walk by these inmates in a close proximity, every single tool watch that they make, which is required every 30 minutes. Continuous verbal and physical contact with the staff, I put very dated, but I think the word probably should be dilapidated, would be a more fitting description. And it's sad, when I walked through it, I could not believe what we had to work with. String need for major repairs, plumbing, lighting, drainage. We went through, we took pictures in November, and these are some of the pictures. Very dirty. I can tell you that if this occurred in the last four years, it would be extremely shocking. We are responsible for maintaining the safety of our officers and the safety of our inmates. Somehow or another, it seems that we're being tasked with not only that, but to make painting and repairs as well, and that cannot be the case. We don't have the manpower for that. Facility issues, this facility has gone down. It looked like a third world country, and when those inmates were laid on the floor, that's somebody's son. And yes, he committed a crime, he's not being convicted, he's in it. But I would know my son in there. One, two, three, four, and five, we can house up to 160 inmates, and based off what we're looking at now, eighty percent of our facility is an open concept, and I'm going to explain to you why that's critical, and I'm going to explain to you why that's resulting in our detention officers leaving, and why let's put in overworked staff, and why let's cause up a lot of issues. Why now let's do it. Virginia, North Carolina has the rule, Virginia has the rule, 20% of your facility can be open, everything else should have to be in a lockdown, everything else. These doors built in the nineties, no separation, when I walked in, buzzed in, and the door closes, and inmates in all histories, I'm talking about criminal histories, where are very violent murderers to those that's been arrested for drunk driving. And I can tell you, that's a difference, that's a difference. Not all inmates are the same, some are predatory, and some are not. When you go in, and you know that door closes behind you, and you have one officer watching you, one officer watching you, and if it all goes down, he can't leave his post, he's got to let up their hands, he's going to buzz them. So now we have six to eight people working, half of that are female, the other half are male. So you got two or three males that will come in. I can tell you, that's an outnumbered problem, that's a serious issue. So open concept. Now segregation, this is where we're going to, this is where a lot of this hinges, and I'm going to try my best to walk you through it and explain it. Segregation, we had one segregation unit with eighteen cells, 36 beds, and we were using that for female lockdown, because the law requires females to be outside, outside, and male inmates security. That's where we had to put them. So we continue to have all these issues, just like the inmate that was starting officer head back. Just like the inmate when I went for disruption in the jail, we had to go in and try to bring it under control, and we put him in a lockdown, and he puts stuff in the toilet, and he flushes, and he runs water out everywhere, and there's nowhere to put him, we had nowhere. The decision was made, probably the sheriff asking me to come and take a look at it, to shift the females to another facility and use the segregation. Segregation would be used for those with disciplinary issues, right? Need to be separated. We'd done that, and we could see there was immediately some type of, I guess... Just like the inmate when I went for disruption in the jail, we had to go in and try to bring it under control. And we put him in a lockdown, and he puts stuff in the toilet, and he flushes, and he runs water out everywhere, and there's nowhere to put him. We had nowhere. The decision was made, private sheriff asking me to come and take a look at it, to shift the females to another facility and use the segregation. Segregation would be used for those with disciplinary issues, right? Need to be separated. We'd done that, and we could see there was immediately some type of, I guess, result of the facility not having some disruptions and challenges. Since then, our assaults have gone down. But we have not, and I'm going to show you, that is not the end at all. We have got to have some way to lock people down. But even this facility has to be renovated. Showers don't work. It's all all around the beginning of that, but I've asked some inmates, things are going on, trying to get understanding from both sides. And they would say, I don't have water in my cell. It's not working. My toilet's not flushing. I can't flush. Well, technically, my staff, well, we can't use that cell. But when you're at full capacity, what do you do? What do you do? When you, when they don't have working water, working toilets, we're supposed to shut it down, right? Remember, we see a lot of folks, mental health is a serious issue. Sick calls, just the serials you see. Period diseases, SCADs, HIV, STDs. That's typically, the way we know that is because they tell us, right? People will tell you when they have those things. That is a hazard in itself. Had to be thrown feces in here, and had to go home, be in the family, potential, potential take advantage by community. That's pretty bad, right? That's why I said, God willing, we won't work there. That's where we have medical facility. That's our holding cell. You can't hold them there for twenty-four hours, correction, twenty-three hours to fifty-nine minutes. They have no natural life. So you can't hold them there longer. You have to find some means to put them. So you bring them in with heroin addiction, and now they detox them. You bring them in with other issues. Where do you put them? We have nowhere to put them. We put them in open night cell, and they sweat it out. We're not being watched. That's a huge liability. Huge. Facility doesn't, we don't have any with. The sim bay that we were trying to use on West End, the state said, shut it down. ISO one and two on West End, state said, shut it down. You will not use it. That's how bad it was. And in their words during a meeting, not mine, but theirs, our facility is in the top five worst facilities in the state. But here, here lies something that we have a chance to fix. Classification. The rules of the State of Ohio says that you have a rigid classification for the placement of inmates within limitations imposed by design and capacity of the jail. I can tell you the challenge for classification is architectural design. You have, you have people come in, I already told you, eighty percent of our facility is open bed. The west side bars, if one may ask, well, can't you use that? Can't you lock them down? We already are doing that. If you're on the west side of the bar section, it is not your first time probably in our jail, probably in this jail. You have a pretty good record. That's why you're there. And that stays full. We have gangs. I can tell you, if you put one gang member in with another set that are not happy with each other outside of the facility, as I told me at Edgecombe, you would be carrying them out, that it would kill them. You have to separate them. You, so in essence, we're asking them questions. We have intel, if you will, of where we need to put them and how we have to separate them. And when our west side bars are full, we have to put them somewhere else. Where else do we put them? Everywhere else to put them, but in open night cities and make sure that I hit a door with somebody in the same, or different affiliation. And yes, we have a gang problem. Classification, it would be ideal to say we can have enough space for minimum, medium, and maximum customer. You know, if you have this, you can separate those with violent histories, predator or non-predator. You can take those that are giving you disciplinary issues, and you can instill punishment or separation and have it written out, and by guidelines. And then if you pull them away from others, others tend to pivot to that. Basically, what I'm telling you is, essential to the operation, and this is where I got information obtained, it was related to federal, federal ruling, a judge ruling, and say, operation is only an operation, and they said of a prison, but we are a county, we are a county prison. It enables the institution to separate nonviolent from inside state or, and those that are violent. And gang problem now versus ten years ago, versus twenty years ago. Look at the news. We all see what that is. It has increased. Violence has increased. If it were not for medical advances, in safety vests, in training, law enforcement, kill would be at a all-time high. But only because of those things and the grace of God, it's staying the level it is. Our current design, that's it. Almost impossible. When you have it already full, and somebody comes in, needs to go somewhere else, where do you put them? What do you do? And then you put them in another night cell, and then they go in, and they start trouble. And you put them in segregation, and they tear the brakes down off the wall, tear the bunks off the wall. We ship them to other places to get help. And other places call us back and say, you got to take them back. Got to take them back. The report that came out in December, the full paper report, that I just briefed on, sir, ma'am. We have covered everything in that full paper report. Everything over the weekend has been covered. We are waiting on the control panel to be corrected, that the doors are shut, unlocked. So in that interim, we have staff that make rounds during every shift to make sure that these doors are locked numerous times. They complete a log, acknowledging, surveying, they've done that. Exit doors are checked, being checked twice a shift, to make sure that nothing's blocking them. The keys have been fixed, so it's extremely easy access to put that key in, and then what you're supposed to do is to get in and out of the facility as needed. I can tell you that I reached out and I went to the two counties that I've spoken about, other counties. And I want us to have the best practices and procedures in our detention facility that we can have. So we're looking to see, what are the best practices? And we're going to do that, and we'll continue to do that, and we're willing to do that. We are going to have things in place to do that. We have an agency that's going to come in, is well-respected, and give us an evaluation of our operations. That's how you get better. You reflect, you look, anything that changes, and you don't get rid of it. You go back later on and you do the same thing. Monthly building walkthroughs, I heard that. We're going to implement that. That's something we had spoken about earlier. With the other agency I was with, we inducted those kind of things, and we have reports that we threw out, and information is sent in. That is something that will be completed. Phones will be made. We will conduct monthly walkthroughs. Things that are not correct, we will, we will make sure they're correct. It is my home desire that I can meet with Jonathan, so that we can have a legal basis to review the things that need to be reviewed, and follow up on things that need to be followed up, and pay attention to all details, facility and operation. And that's what we're planning on doing. We're planning on driving forward. Because as I said in the beginning, maybe it's not about me, and it's not about Sheriff Stone. If we can't make it better, then what we find, then we don't end this with it. It's about the people that work here. It's about the people that come to our facility. And it's about the citizens depending on when we have in our facility, that they don't get out. Because that's not good. That's not good. So we all stand by, sir, ma'am, for the facility to be corrected, there are issues. We took a powder washer, for example, and tried to spray and clean the showers. Because a daily spraying of cleaner and using the water and shower in the lock is hard to get. While also family is very hard to get clean with a powder washer, with the paint that's on the wall, it's hard to clean. Most of them are torn. We need special coatings. There's things out there that can be put with shower wash, epoxy paint, or other type of things that grind and stuff easy to wash us off, and we can do that, right? So it's not all the staff are not cleaning. Some of these things can't be cleaned with a powder washer. It looks pretty when you first clean it. We're waiting on the facility. Soon as we get those, and the state says, yes, you can bring inmates back. We stay ready to bring them back. We stay ready because every week, we transport people back and forth from verti to other places to court. That is taxing us. We're pulling people from other divisions to help us with these transports, and then they can't do their job. So the longer we extend this, the harder it makes it on us, and the less quality service we need as citizens, because we're pulling people for other areas. So yes, it needs to be fixed. But what are we going to do in the interim to try to figure out what are we going to do about this classification? If we don't fix this, if we don't find a way to fix this, then that twenty-four hour, nineteen minute revolving door, I don't think it's going to continue to do it, continue. I want, I want to give these officers a quality field training program. I want to give them quality training. I want to get our detention staff, give them shit quality training. But in order to do that, we got to have people step. Otherwise, we scramble just to make it through the end of the day. And you wonder when we go home. Do I need to take a beautiful mother to home? So don't expose my family to some husbands. I'm going to show you some pictures that we took. That year, where this gray PC is on the floor, where it's sprayed through the bars. The bars have limitations. Bars, they can reach through, look, reaching through and grabbing electrical lights and smoking bowls. There's a smoke rod that you tear off. You say, well, can't you just lock them down? Can't you just lock them down? The answer to that is, yes, sir, yes, ma'am. Twenty-three hours a day, and we got to let them out. And then if you lock them down, then the officers have extreme difficult time when they come through because now it's a lot of anger to deal with because of lockdown. Look at the most quarters these officers walk. Things being thrown, nowhere to put them, nowhere to provide disciplinary action. Cell doors that are jammed, you put them in and close it, they're jamming it and nothing to back up. Toilets in an open area, they don't work. And if we went by the law with this, we might have let her law with this. You shut that whole cell up now because you can't have it. Bars rusted through. But it's not an escape risk as much as it is a shame risk. Grabbing metal, rusting metal, and using it against each other, using it to try to scrape out whatever your imagination is of theirs. Bumps down in the bottom of four or five that we're using, that when an officer just looks in, he can't see anything, and he has to go downstairs, down to the back, by himself. You tell inmates, take the stuff down. Don't hang anything up. You come back and they hang it up. You go back in, you take things away, and then you have to reissue it out, then you put it back up. Bars that open it up, and you have to pull and get them open because of the rust and decay. Piping between the chases in the west side. When I first saw this, and the guy was jamming everything in the toilet, and it was running all over the floor. And I said, man, we need to do something with him. He needs to be locked down. We have nowhere to put him. We already put him, we're only the best we can put him. We have to go in and shut the water off. So now the officer, they have to shimmy between two sides. One door on one side, one on the other, and the water chases in the middle. Shimmy and walk along, and walk along until he finds that particular pipe, and shut the water off, and he comes back out. We asking him to do this for how much of you? The kids in the yard, inmates escaped. And we had to fix, and we had to conversation longer with that. I don't know if they can crawl out of the body, but I can tell you, if you did, that's wrong after being between having our facility with desired termination. They can kick that loose. They can kick that loose. Just a better picture of where they got to walk through. Man, they walking through that. Inmates having issues. You got to walk through and shit, put those pipes down. Molder in the kitchen. When I went through the kitchen, I thought, dude, they've got a kid. Molder in the ceiling, it's a complaint that comes back. The water's standing in the floor of the kitchen, and I asked, why is water standing all over the top? Where is there now a drain? And the trustees tell, told me, said, I have to take and squeegee it off into a drain because we don't know where it's coming from. It's coming from a wall, but we don't know where it's coming from. It's every day. And guess what's right above that? That water. They'll walk in every day while they cook the food. It's an electrical socket with a wire hanging right down there because there's nowhere to see it, and we try to pull it up. This is a, where you open the door to the cells. Got to put your hands on it every day. I have watched Sergeant Young open this on numerous occasions. And it fascinates me that he's, he's skilled because he's, he does it all the time. He can hardly get it open at times. And, and to think that one of our officers had just went in there and was being assaulted, and under the stress of trying to get him out. And under stress, we respond differently. Somebody's got to open it to get in and get to him. He's got a thing on his cell, thing for his cell. And see what happens. He had a shower, looked like that came out of the peen of a shower. Doors four and five, they were losing the bunks. This is where they had plaster. They would lay on their bunk, and they would scrape the wall, scrape the ceiling, and pull the plaster out, make holes. Using the plaster for potential weapons. The inmate showing how easy it is behind a contraband. Just pull it back, hit the shower, find whatever you need, right? You do a good job of searching when people come in. There's a lot of ways of running things into a jail. Some things, no matter what you do, may be out of your control. You do the best you can, but I don't think there's anywhere, anywhere. You do the best you can, but I don't think there's anywhere in any facility in this nation that's a hundred percent prison's proof of that. You can do the best you can, and we have, we have trained officers additionally, again, in reinforcement policy, search techniques, because it's all training. Things be revisited at times. We are doing it. That's pretty gross. That's when an inmate goes into a door, you know, within fifteen minutes, he's attacked. Because as I said, the golden concept, predator versus non-predator, game versus game. That's an inmate. It could very easily be an officer. All an officer's got to do is go in, and inmate receives him in one way or another, but it's not retaliated. And as I said before, we don't have a force on standby or any kind of head button for rushing extreme events. We'll start with that picture, because really, when it comes down to it, that's the only reason we need to do it, right now. Make it safe for them, we don't want, it is our job as leaders, our job, to look out for those who work in the best. It is our job as leaders to look out for those that are responsible and that care. The citizens of this county are responsible and that care when it comes to safety. We're responsible to give them quality service, to do stewardship, and a lot of the things made. We do the best we can. And if we don't do that, and we fail him, we fail those just like him, and we fail the inmate that was attacked as well. And we cannot, in the instance, we cannot do that with the design that we currently have. And if we continue on this path, you're going to continue to get a lot of the very same results. We can change things optimistically, but you can't change and you avoid when he doesn't feel safe. And this is not ten, twenty years ago. This is today, and this is all effects. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you.
And I thought the conditions were very bad.
Yeah, you mentioned that you hired a Oh, yeah, yes, I think we'll stop, no, we'll.
First of all, yeah, I was expecting to hear you talk about the management of the jail. But in my opinion, your report was three fourths about the detention center itself, what needs to be done, and we already have that.
Yes, sir.
But we're going to fix it correctly. My question is, you had, you said that you hired twenty-four
Yes, sir.
working in detention, and nineteen of them. Were they ready at the beginning, had they been properly orientated, properly trained, to be at, be detention officers before they accepted the position?
Sir, I was not involved in, in those hires, so far as their background, I can't speak on that. What I can speak on is this, is that there is no structured field training program in the jail. Then, there is and will be now, a structured field training. I know how important field training is. I know that in the nineties, not only was I training as a field training officer with my prior agencies, and I was heavily involved in supervising. I know that if you fail to train in old days, you train to fail, and you fail the employee to some degree. The conditions in the staffing, and they have been trained. When I talked to one of the employees just the other day about his training program, he expressed how some things were done, and how he had it happen in some other areas. And those are areas that, as a management, as leadership, those areas will be addressed. I can say that when I started the sheriff's office, Sheriff Stone took over. One of the first things that I implemented was a very structured field training program. Because after retiring, we moved to the sheriff's office, I went through a very brief field training program that was really not a lot to it. We changed that, and our patrol deputies performed outstanding, with very minimal, minimal complaints whatsoever. They served with integrity and professionalism. So I can tell you to answer your question, were they prepared? I had spoken with him, so I can't honestly say that. I can tell you that not only the training that we need to give is probably never what they have to do.
Yeah, in all my years here on earth, I've always been taught that you're going on a job, it may be new, or it may be your first one. That you get a good orientation, and doing this orientation, the management, you're supervised, can pick up on what you need, and be trained to do and fake the job. And I think this is something that we need to pay attention to going on in the future. I've heard quite a bit about inmates throwing feces on their employees at the detention center. What are they using to do that?
Sir, so at this point, at that point in time, part of what they were using was shampoo bottles that they would issue to a canteen so they could wash their hair and so forth. Once we started having these issues, we immediately addressed that, and removed those bottles too. That they can use other things, they have styrofoam cups, they have different things that they can collect, and people with the, with the retrieving of the plants and meals, those things can be somehow kept, and not necessarily being kept. So that's part of what was being done, and changes were made and implemented to take those items away and provide other type of items for them.
We need automatic commodes. When they get off of it, it automatically flushes.
Sir, I'm sure that I might
And that's responsibility that the officials have to answer.
I can tell you, I'm glad to, you wouldn't have known, you know, working for if you have other questions. So people that you showed up there, a little recent?
Most of those pictures were taken in December when I walked through, and I have a book that we put together, and I'd be glad to get a copy to you, so you can get out to the city, the facility, that you walk through the entire facility, showing things that are operational, and things that are entirely repaired. And they're just some pictures from that, from the book that we, that we had.
Well, I was just wondering, I know because we're going to work, and I was just wanting to go for a recent picture of it too.
Which are those pictures were recent, yes, sir.
Okay, well, I would say this, that the board and sheriff's department, these work together. At this point, we have bad publicity out here, which is going to affect employing people too. So we need to work together. And we are prepared to do it.
Did you want to play that?
No, I'm going to.
Okay. Do you have a move to have a comment, daylight, sir?
Captain Wilson, you mentioned that y'all had an agency that's going to come in and evaluate the processes and procedures at the detention center. Can you span on them a little bit, including the timeline?
So, we have reached out to one of the larger agencies that have a very well-known program. We already have things in place operationally, and we're going to continue to move those things in place. They're going to come here, it should be within the next couple of weeks. He's getting back with me on some dates, so within the next two to three weeks at max, they should be here to spend time with us to look at how we operate from court, how we operate administratively, and give us feedback. And as I talked to him, as I talked to the captain in charge, I explained to him that I want to honest feedback. Because the only way we can leave that, and the best we can do is retrieve honest feedback, and that we appreciate anything that he can do. So, things have been done, completed, processed. That's not what we're starting. We're looking further. And anything that we can do to make it better, because only if we make it better for the processes, then it makes it better for our employees. As I have found, in a lot of positions I've been in, a lot of times, they, other things drive, help the employee, is that what I, in its power, and do. When you have a facility that wants to do sort of things, it creates challenges. So that's where, where the people that look at it, have already, they have devised one. For other protected facilities, have their walkthrough, that's called a walkthrough, this is a couple of weeks ago, they told me, these are things that keep you for a long, a thirty years, all right, so we're going to continue to get better shop, get better rights, and we just need the facility provision for us, so we can actually do what we need to do.
Other movers have a comment?
Just have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Robert Powell.
Unlike everybody else in this room, in that I'm in a safe jail, I will save conditions for the people in the jail. I'm disappointed at what I've seen so far today. And if you will just bear with me and think about this for a minute. We have heard a very detailed, specific facility report. You cannot deny that, that you were provided with a very detailed, specific report. And Captain Wilson, I appreciate you being here, I appreciate the report that you made, but you have not made one mention of the operational issues in that report. So, to me, it's a simple thing. You've got issues. You've got facility issues, you've got operational issues. It was stated in the paper yesterday, and that's part of our problem. We've got so much press in the paper and social media, and I would, I would tell you that if you will come to these meetings, you will get much better information here than you're going to get in social media. But what it said in the paper yesterday, and I believe it, if it was said, all operational issues are completed. And we reported today on the facility. So we didn't get a specific operational report, we just got generalities, it's all completed. So I trust you, I believe that. So if it's all done, then why don't we get the state back in here this week to sign off that it's done? And then the state will tell us how many people we can put in this jail, and then the staffing plan will be developed unless we already have it. It was said in the paper yesterday that there was no awareness that we needed it. But I would assume that once you determine how many people you're going to put in the jail, you're probably going to want to have a staffing plan. So again, what, if we walk away from this place today, if we walk away from this place today and turn this back over to social media, then we are making a tremendous mistake. So rather than standing there and saying everything is completed, then we need to be getting together as a group and continuing to be transparent to the public, which is what we want to do, and get this jail started back up. Maybe it won't be two hundred people in there, maybe it'll be a hundred. But you know full well, like everyone in this room, that we cannot solve your segregation isolation issues in the next few months. That's going to depend upon the Mothman Report that we're going to receive in February, and then that will tell us what we need to do. It will give us a path that we will follow. I just would encourage you today, when you leave this place, do not go on social media and make comments unless you have the information. I will refer to one specific thing. My, my wife asked me, she said, what in the world have you guys been doing out there? You've got a rider truck outside of jail since May handling your refrigerated items. Well, you know, I didn't know that. I thought we had it out there in November. And wow, it's November, it's not May. So that's the kind of information that's getting out there. Now, I don't know why it's getting out there, but it needs to stop, and we need to work together, and we need to cooperate, and we're not going to work together, Captain Wilson, and the rest of the sheriff's department, as long as you take the approach to stand before us and just tell us what we're doing wrong with the facility. Work with us to fix the facility. You've got those pictures that you showed. Now you say they are recent pictures. Are they recent since the work that our maintenance crew did in there? I don't think so. So what you're doing is you're putting up a false narrative to the public, and that's just not right. That's just not right. We can work together, and maybe we will get a new jail, I don't know. The Mothman Report will tell us that. But whether it's an expansion, or whatever it is, we can't do it until we see the Mothman Report. And if we don't get off of this, trying to go back and forth with each other and start working together, then this is never going to be solved. I want to give you, and I'll say this while I'm talking, then I'll be done. In the, in the comments that were made, public comments. And I'm not going to mention any names, but if you will hear, you heard this comment. And it personally offended me. And it should offend the three previous sheriffs of Nash County. Frank Brown, Jimmy Grimes, and Dick Jenkins. I knew two of those sheriffs very well. They were good, honorable men. And the comment was made, unless I wrote it down wrong. Nash County was accustomed, Nash County was accustomed to a Andy Griffith-type sheriff prior to Sheriff Stone. Now, do you lift yourself up in your position by demeaning others? I don't think so. I don't think so. I'm proud of the work that Jim, that Sheriff Stone, that Dick Jenkins did. I voted for Dick Jenkins. I voted for Jimmy Grimes. I didn't know Frank Brown that well, but they did good work. They did what they could do with what they had at the time. And I just think it's a shame that you would demean those people by making a comment like that. I want to mention one other thing. Social media, any concern? Mister, our chairman spoke about background. So tell me what he meant when he said he meant in the background. And that's exactly what he attempted to do with the manager and others for a long time, a long time. And quite frankly, it was frustrating to this board. And this board reached a point where we said, chairman, it ain't working. We've got to go in a different direction. We've got to be more transparent. We've got to make sure that everybody understands exactly what's being said. And that, can't you see these open meetings? And we plan to continue this. So the background meetings have come to these meetings. Now, I'm not going to mention any names, but you see this on social media, if you follow social media, I don't. My, my wife will look at it pretty often, and she'll, she'll mention it to me. it to me. But here's one thing she mentioned to me, she said she saw on social media that our chairman had built a school in Bailey that had leaked for a number of years. Now, who put that out? I don't know. I know Channel 11 has indicated that they were contacted by someone, and I believe it was from the Sheriff's Department, asking that same question, challenging, questioning the ability of our chairman to do what he does as a career. So, to me, here's how that hit me, here's how that hit me. We authorized, directed our chairman to speak for this board, to speak for this board and present factual constructive information. So, in challenging and going after our chairman in that manner, then what you do is you indirectly question the credibility of this entire board. Now, I, I'm not a wealthy person, I don't get any financial gain, uh, to speak of from being a county commissioner, I served because I care about Nash County, I want to make it a better place, you know what? I ain't bragging that it's a better place than it was when I came on this board, and I'm going to stay here and do what I do to the best of my ability until the people tell me to go away. But I will not be intimidated or coerced into doing something that I don't think is in the best interest of Nash County. Have you got that clip?
Yes, sir.
Uh, let me just make one comment about that clip first. On December the 11th, this board met with the Nash Rock and Mount School System, and in that meeting, once again, that subject was thrown out there. You know, "Mr. Chairman, you built this leaking school, it's been leaking for all these years, and finally, Miss Chavis fucked up, and she said, 'This is on December the 11th,'" she debunked that story. On December the 17th, that was put in the Wilson Times. On December the 24th, two weeks after it was debunked on the TV, and a week after it was debunked in the Wilson Times, I never saw it in the Telegraph or in the other paper, two weeks, a week after it was debunked. I don't hear about it anymore, then, then I hear about Channel 11, so that concerned me, it really concerned me a lot. So, what I would encourage us to walk away today is try to work together and start, uh, all this back and forth, it's not, it's not the one city that, and, and Mr. Chairman, I insist that we don't walk away from here today without, yeah, without some agreement as to how we're gonna go forward, because if I just go home and all I see is social media telling us what we're doing so wrong, we're not comfortable. So, show that clip if you would.
Yeah, and it gives me great heartburn to say out loud, you probably have some points, because we've been running this for over 50 years, but with the, since, that's our term, and, and we've always been a listening, even though we don't always do it, that's right, and it's been since 1972, but I'm pretty fascinated, deeply in the issue that was brought up early, and I think I shared this with Mr. Lamb months and months ago, because we all had heartburn about that clip, but I had to talk to him, Paul, who confirmed that it was not a construction problem, it was a design problem, but even though it was a problem, you sent your people back out there, and I stayed at 7:00, but you drive back here and have to inspect it, and she confirmed as well that it was a design flaw, not a construction flaw, but yet he fixed it at no initial cost to school board, that was what I found out.
I appreciate you making stuff.
Well, 'cause I felt like, but I gave you heartburn over that, I think we had some serious, very pointed discussions for about two hours, bro. But I did do my best, yeah, and, and she finished coffee, paper, brush. But the point I would like to say, I do think we made some progress with committee, but probably.
And I would, I would like to hope that, uh, that would whatever, put that issue to bed, that was fixed at a cost of 22,000. So, I'll leave you with this, work together and stop demeaning people in any way, be respectful and courteous to other people. If you do that, we'll make a lot of progress in a very short period of time. I'm your right, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Commissioner, do you have anything that the jail never looked like that? That's so unique.
I have to go out of order with my.
I know, I said what I thought.
We appreciate your comments.
And I appreciate if you do something about it in the future.
I, I have been in the jail more than once as a matter of fact. Your back, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment, please, sir?
Alan, uh, I think we were to a point where we'd closed it off, uh, I didn't want to ask you one question, then I'm gonna lie here and play some comment, how long will you be doing what you're doing presently? Do you happen to know? You know, when we met last week with State, uh, and I met with them afterwards, they were very complimentary of what you were going about, but I hope you will lead this, get this, uh, opportunity for the law call, because I believe with your leadership, it was perfect, uh, moving in a positive direction, looking forward, uh, negative, moving in a positive direction, and you have the, the skill set, I can see, as well as looking free out of mistakes all very quickly, it would feel like that happened. Have you been, are you here for a month, two months, or that's something you don't know?
Sir, I'm not sure exactly how long. I'm told the share is my plan, initially, we have this facility, we're gonna smooth the operations the way that we need to.
Well, I, I, I would encourage the sheriff, then, leave, leave you here for a period of time, so I just think you have the skill set to make this thing work. You made any comments on all operations, uh, items in that letter were complete, if you've got a opinion, leave, make a double C47, D2416, and double check that, but I'm not here today to question what you're saying, but I, I think, uh, I sit here looking at my notes that I, I've got, but you know, ladies and gentlemen, uh, if you listen to everything you said here today, we are just not that far off, we really are not, we're not a long time, you need containment, so, uh, we, we, we order them, uh, out of catalog, and you get here tomorrow, we can put them, let us know the way to work, so, we've got professionals working on bringing that to a head, and I know we can't put all of them in, like, back in our teachers, so, uh, but if we work together, uh, everybody here, the sheriff's department, including sheriff, I don't know if they're still here or not, but.
Ruby Davis.
Uh, sheriff has been here, uh, but, uh, if we work together, we can certainly get at least part of it back in, and, you know, we talked a lot about, uh, our, I keep hearing the word freezing a budget in sheriff's department. I want to make it very clear to the citizens that we have not thrown the sheriff's department budget by any, uh, shake, bone, or pack. The only thing we did for them, and I used the word myself last month, it's, again, a bad word, and when I asked my person that, uh, I trust a lot to look at things, I'll say, they sent me a whole different thing, because I could have done much better on it, and I try to learn from that. But I did use the word freeze the non-essential item, but I, I wouldn't, you understand, high government, where, thank you, be at the pocket where the city Rock and Mount, uh, for a little period of time, been a long time ago, but, uh, during that time, it wasn't unusual at all for our manager to see his revenues were not meeting expectations, and we get a letter that was sent out the other day to the sheriff's department, to say we had to get everything approved by our budget, uh, before we boxed it, even though it was in our budget. That's what the manager that I were holding, uh, and I look back, and I know I, if your revenues are not coming in, you work out of your own, uh, checkbook, when it's running short, you gotta slow down on something, but that's just all it is. What we asked for in the board is, we asked to put in a layer of, uh, approval on purchases out of the sheriff's department and the, uh, detention center, just to try to hold as much funds as we could in our coffers, so we would have the money, you pay, uh, this building, we created every day, 11,000 bucks. Uh, you, you know, it goes along on certain, we, we're gonna run out of money in sheriff's department very quickly on non-essential items, uh, but the manager, I, I talked to him about this, uh, and the P cards, we all know they have been reactivated, I don't think this board quite understood this P card style, the impression that we would have credit cards in government, so it looks like to me they've changed the name, called the P card, instead of credit card, I'm not sure, I, I'm not a manager at all, it's a trouble to hold the P one, uh, in government, uh, but it, it just looks like, uh, the manager, I asked him about it, and he told me that's something I do just about every year, I'll send that letter out to all departments, but it's normally later in the year, it's only getting close to budget time when, uh, it's time to do a new budget, so it wasn't any violence taken to Sheriff Stone, and, and we have wanted as a board to make sure that things, uh, move through that extra layer quickly, uh, it, it does, and, and, and you know, this manager is charged with delivering this board a violent budget every year, and at the end of it, this board doesn't hear that we spent way over what we had budgeted, that, that's just true. But it's not just the sheriff's department, it's the sheriff's department, and it's 16 or 17 other departments, so he's got a heck of a job to make that budget work for a 12-month period, uh, there's no intent whatsoever to keep the sheriff's office from doing anything it does, and, 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 Mr. Wilson, I wouldn't say for a part of your presentation, this board knows what Sheriff Stone has done to this town. I don't mind seeing it again, if you want to show me that part again next week, I'll be glad to listen to it again. We appreciate Sheriff Stone, this board does very much, uh, all the things that he's done, he brought here, we know he does good stuff, and we are not challenging anything he's doing. All we're doing is just trying to solve the issue in the detention center by working together, uh, I think we, I, I don't know where we got all the track, I, I think we just need to grow up, uh, Sheriff Stone and myself and this board, if they so choose, I'm charged with, uh, I'm elected char, chairman, so it's up to me to make it work. But Sheriff Stone, you stay aside just a little bit, I wouldn't be able to visualize what's happening. I, I just want to say, whatever it takes for you and myself, leaving this board, getting together and working on this thing, it's just time to do it, they expect us to do it, we elected to do it, and, and I think you understand, and I fully understand that you are in elected position, and, and you've got full control of, of everything you do except for the first ring, uh, and unfortunately, we got that position, I wish we did that, quite frankly, I wish you had tax authority, raise your own money, just like schools, but that ain't the way it works, we're given such criteria, the general faculty, I'll sit here today and speak for this board, we're ready to work with you, but, uh, it won't happen overnight, but you gotta help us cut the running, uh, cash register that's running on us right now, uh, and I would greatly appreciate it, we'll have this board be there to do that. I, I don't understand some of the things that Mr. Ilaw says, uh, and, and, boy, saying, I've been in this long enough, I let stuff like that roll off my back, uh, it's, uh, thinking about school, I mean, I've owned that for 10 years, quite frankly, finally a high school, uh, friend of mine clearly does, and I appreciate her doing that, and I thank her every time I see her, it is very long overdue, but with that said, I, I don't want you to make use of me today, I'm just telling you this board is ready to work with you, sir, to resolve this issue like we are expected to do by the normal people that are here today.
Thank you, a couple of things, we want to school, I want to know about school, the comment about the Andy Griffith office was made by county manager, said he used to work in the sheriff's office, that had all these federal alphabet and doing all this kind of stuff, who committed to work against students and victims.
I haven't said anything about.
Hold on.
Gentlemen, I've asked you all.
Okay, well, now we get back to the other point, 110%, thank you, Sue, thank you, Commissioner Kong, I've asked for the whole time to be open-minded about exactly what you said in the Moesman report, whether it's, whatever it says, that's what we're gonna do, but the idea of cutting off a credit card, it was done, it does hurt services, somebody in council changed that, the commissioners changed it, and I appreciate it.
Hey, I'll say to you, chairman and my wife, chairman, what we found, what it was, uh, back in the top of the board, we did change that, but if we had consulted the board, we would have ended that position, sir.
Well, and I appreciate you doing that, I reached out either that time it was changed, and I appreciate it, thank you for including that, people, we're gonna work in a right direction, and as far as bringing these inmates back, I'm not hungry to love people, it would be hugely easier on me if inmates were back today from this, all this transport, I have no overtime, I need to do anything, but going back and holding my bunch of hostages to something, as y'all seen today, that is totally out of my control, it's very difficult, but at the end of the day, so as we can get inmates back here safely, now to the number, and, uh, Commissioner, I'll, I'll even say, you know, it's probably not the number one that's been it, but definitely bring them back here with security, so as to plonk and things, so please, and look, it was testified, this stuff is fixed, I was in there last night, there's standing water in there, there's water coming out of the wash, there's a lot that needs to be done, but I'm here to correct those things, and we can move forward together, I'll have any out of hospital visits of board, I look forward to working with you, and I appreciate your time for that.
Sheriff, about your comment, we still got work to do.
We've got work to do, but.
We do have work to do, because.
And there's been.
If I'm able to do that, it's not all operations, you're playing there for all operations.
Well, at the end of the day, with a lot of work together to get there, to maintain the facility, the use, the operation, and I stand behind that 110%, but people. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you so much. Wilson, I think you had something more to say, uh, you were going to answer.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and, uh, Commissioners, this report I have today was in no ways meant to throw stones in one way or another, it's clearly to point out the deficiencies in the design creates challenges for our staff, and those challenges, as was demonstrated, are things that we need to work over, and we are committed, I'm not gonna tell you that it's all facility, as you just said, there's things operational that are being looked at and will be corrected, and there's things facility-wise that needs to be looked at and corrected. And those things that are facility-wide, if we don't correct those, it's gonna continue to cause issues operationally, so I hope that the other team will work as a group, and we can do this, uh, for the benefit of our facility and for the benefit of our community.
I, I gave a lot of leeway today, well, you did what you did, because.
Thank you.
You did nothing, uh, that mattered. I hope we can set that behind now.
Yes, sir.
Some of your report will be short and, and stuff, taking where we are, I hope you will get your back in the report next time, we'll come back with a true operation by report, we see what you wanted to show today, we've taken it in, we do, knew those things before we got here today, I hope you can do that.
Yes, sir.
Because we've been presented many times before, and it's true, I think you saw your time, and I'm like, it's been in Nash County anymore.